Thirty-one P M. I would like to officially call our work session to order. Mister Parker, can you please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Daniels. Ms. Davis.
Present.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mister Jones.
Here.
Ms. Rawls.
Present.
Mister Rodriguez. Mister Rodriguez. I know that he is on. I'm gonna mark him and move on, cuz I know he's here on through the.
Present.
There we go. And Ms. Bowers.
Present, thank you. Just a few notes before we begin. You will hear from a few of the committees this evening. In terms of quarterly reporting for the administration committee, we will not hear from the Office of Equity and Compliance this evening. And for the Community and Economic Development Committee, we will not hear from the Bureau of Planning. Just wanted to make those notes for anyone following along with our agenda. So we will begin with the work of the Administration Committee. Our first quarterly report for the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-four will be shared from the Bureau of Information Technology.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Steve Bortner, IT Director, and I'll give the update on the first quarter for the Bureau of IT. Description of the department. The Bureau of Information Technology is responsible for the administration of the city's blend of mainframe network and cloud-based computer systems. And these systems are utilized by all city departments and bureaus. The Bureau provides technical support and maintenance for all computers and other devices deployed throughout the city, which includes network equipment and city-issued cellphones. The Bureau also partners with various organizations to extend and expand the technological capabilities of the city's operations. And this includes local, state, and national organizations as well. Evaluating emerging technologies assists with the process of modernizing and streamlining city systems. Daily responsibilities include the monitoring, troubleshooting, and resolution of help desk tickets, which are submitted through the support portal, server activity, antivirus activity, cyber threats, printer services, and software deployments. Quarterly summary. The team completed eight hundred and sixty-seven help desk tickets in the first quarter, which is an increase of one hundred and fifty-five since the fourth quarter. Update on the Operation Municipal Migration Project. As you know, it's a six-phase project. Two of the phases are completed, three are active, and one has not yet been started. The active phases are human capital management, scheduled implementation, either the third or fourth quarter of this year. We have run into some issues, some processing issues, primarily around the filing, reporting, and remittance of income taxes. And we are working through those as we go forward. The next active phase is tax billing and collections, and we're scheduled to implement that in the second quarter. Licenses, permits, and codes enforcement scheduled to be implemented probably in the July timeframe at this point. And one of the phases we completed in the last quarter, or in this quarter, is asset maintenance. That was completed for the vehicle maintenance center. And now that that phase is in production, we can add additional departments if the need arises for that. The phase that we haven't started yet is utility billing and collections. We will get started on that in this quarter. And at this point, we think that should be implemented by the end of the year. There are about forty city employees working on the project. And so far through last week, they reported seven thousand seventy-three hours to the project. Annual goal updates. We completed the implementation of the core switch replacement. And that was to replace some aging equipment, one that we started late last year and wrapped up this quarter, in the first quarter. We also implemented a new network management and monitoring system, which will help to identify any unusual traffic on the city's network. We also began implementation of a multi-factor authentication solution. Some of you may be familiar with that. But eventually, that'll be rolled out to all city employees. We also began the implementation of a new storage area network, which replaces one that is expiring or going out of support later this year. And then the last big goal that we started was the implementation of our secondary slash redundant data center, which will be housed at another city location. And part of the storage area network will also be deployed to that location. And we still need to establish communication lines between this building and that location which we're working on. A year-to-date spend. The salary budget is five hundred and seventy-nine thousand. And through the first quarter, we've expended twenty-one point eight-five percent of that. Services, the budget is one point four zero two million dollars. And we've expended or encumbered thirty-seven point one four percent of that through the first quarter. The supplies budget is six hundred and forty-two thousand. And we've expended or encumbered thirty-nine point five-two percent of that. And the capital budget is eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand. And so far, we've expended forty, or encumbered forty-three point seven percent of that. And some of these percentages may seem a little high. But the reason for that, we encumber for the whole year on some of the items. So that's why it's a little bit inflated for the first quarter. And there were no significant deviations from the planned budget, and we don't anticipate any at this time. Special projects and grants. There were no special projects that involve grants in the first quarter. And the updates on the other ongoing major projects were identified earlier in the report. Department vacancy updates. The good news is, as of the end of the first quarter, there were no open positions. So we are fully staffed at this time. And community engagement, interaction, and communication. Our Deputy Director Nathan Grunbein, he participated in a segment of Ten Questions, which was filmed by the Bureau of Communications. And that segment is available on the city's YouTube channel. And that's the report. Any questions?
Thank you very much. I don't have any questions regarding your report. I will open the floor to my colleagues. They may have some. I'll begin with Councilman Jones. Any questions?
Yes, thank you, President Bowers. Just a, just a quick question to get a little bit better understanding of the utilities and collections. How is that gonna work? And that's throughout the departments here?
So the utility billing and collection will be for the trash collection that we currently bill for every month. So it'll basically replace the existing system on the mainframe today.
That's what I was figuring, I was hoping. So, so this will help Mister Miller a lot more in his department?
It should. Right now, we're still gonna continue with monthly billing until a decision is made or a resolution passed to go to annual billing. But the new system will allow either one of those to be done.
So you're saying if, if the resolution is passed or created and brought down for us, so this would take away the paper?
It would take away some of the paper. We would still offer the ability to get the paper bill, but we'd also offer the ability to get it electronically sent to you. So the current system does not allow for that. The new system will.
Okay. All right, no more questions. Thank you, and great report, too.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
No questions for me, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls, any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers. Thank you for being here today, Mister Bortner. I don't have any questions. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
Thank you very much. I appreciate you being here tonight. I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
Yes, thank you, President Bowers. Good evening. I was wondering, was taking a look at the information technology report that was in the budget book. The consulting services, what would those entail?
The primary one is for Steve Zimmerman, who is a former city employee, who is back doing mainframe consulting work to help us continue with day-to-day operations, but also help with the migration to the new system. So that's a hundred and thirty-five thousand of that. The others are in there kind of as a contingency in the event we need to use them for other activities.
And then the other question is the contracted services. Would the consulting fall in under that in some type of way?
No, it wouldn't.
Okay, so that's separate.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
Yes, the city just changed their zoning code to allow for electronic notice, which is a significant reduction in due process rights for our residents. What is our capacity to actually be able to meet those obligations?
I'm not familiar with that at this point. So I don't know the details of it. So I really can't give you a good answer on that.
Thank you. And that's it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we will receive the quarterly report for the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-four from the Bureau of Communications.
Good evening, Council. Starting with a brief description of the Communications Bureau for the record. The Bureau of Communications manages all internal and external communications throughout city government operations. It is responsible for all graphics, photos, videos, audio, and information services. We're also responsible for the city's three-one-one system and atrium help desk, Zendesk. The Bureau organizes all news conferences. We issue press releases, media advisories. We update the public through our social media channels as well. We also have a weekly newsletter, which goes out to thirty-eight hundred recipients. The Bureau of Communications also manages WHBG Channel Twenty, which is our government-access cable channel. The Bureau manages relations with adjacent government agencies as well to ensure compliance with the city's cable television franchise agreement, which I imagine you'll have questions on later and will be able to hopefully provide some clarity there. The Communication Bureau's main project through the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-four was beginning the process to hire a company to redesign our city's website. I formed a team, which included Deputy Information Technology Director Nathan Grunbein, Procurement Manager Hillary Green, and Economic Development Director Jason Graves, as he has experience with web designs and other best practices when it comes to design work. We received inquiries from more than thirty companies. And of that group, we met virtually with eight before deciding on a company called Revise. They met our most important needs of specializing in government websites and working with the word processing and design base on our current website, which is called WordPress. They put together a quote, which also came in under our twenty-thousand-dollar budget. And they will help redesign Harrisburg PA.gov to make it faster, more ADA, accessible, and easier to navigate on mobile devices. Channel Twenty started the new year with a brand-new set. And our first guest on set was the Honorable Councilman Lamont Jones. Thank you, sir. We continue to tape segments for our show, What's the Word, Harrisburg, where we put a spotlight on people and events making a difference in the Harrisburg community. In addition to What's the Word, we have also started a new segment, which I spoke about briefly in my Quarter Four Report earlier this year. Asher Johnson and Emily Speck have been crafting their new segment called Ten Questions, which allows people to get to know city staff in a more personal and fun way. They have produced five episodes so far, with more scheduled. Channel Twenty also produced a thirty-minute mental health special in conjunction with UPMC's Minutes Matter Initiative. This was a follow-up to our September special on the overdose crisis we experienced in how to administer Narcan. We plan to do segments with UPMC in the future focused on CPR training and stop-the-bleed techniques as well. The Channel Twenty team produced a total of thirty-nine videos in Quarter One. And according to our YouTube analytics, totaled sixteen thousand five hundred views for the past quarter, which is up eleven percent from the fourth quarter of twenty-three. With the help of the facilities team, as you saw when you walked into the Martin Luther King Building this evening, when guests come in, not only are they welcomed by large television monitors showcasing city events and content airing on Channel Twenty, as well as flyers of upcoming events that the Parks and Recreation Team are putting on. But we put in shades in our bay windows, which will allow us to convert these previously underutilized spaces into a home for press events and weddings. We also have the Martin Luther King Junior Museum, display cases and photos of memorabilia now in the center of the atrium, so it can be more prominently featured. The city's three-one-one help desk is continuing to work in the first quarter of twenty-four. We solved two hundred and ten tickets up from the one hundred and fifty solved in the previous quarter. As of last Wednesday, we had twelve tickets pending. Major credit here goes to Ayesha Hernandez, who oversees the three-one-one system. And speaking of Ayesha, she and Jeff Washington do incredible work maintaining order and presenting city hall guests with respect and a smiling face when they come into the building. Since the first week of February, when we started keeping track of this stat, twenty-six hundred eighty-six guests have come into the MLK Building. That is, on average, three hundred and eighty-three guests per week. Similarly, my Deputy Communications Director Melissa Mahones Ortiz is in the process of becoming a certified Spanish translator with the American Translation Association. She assisted residents with one hundred cases in the first quarter of the year, translated fifteen documents into Spanish for the Codes Bureau and Health Office, and fifty-six description briefs for the departments throughout city government. We continue to provide daily outreach to the public through our relationships with local press and social media. We hold weekly press briefings with Harrisburg Police Lieutenant Kyle Gouch to maintain a transparent line of communication with our local journalists. In the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-four, the city posted thirty-eight new articles and press releases to the city's latest news section on the website. We also post all press releases and city news to our Facebook page, which is up to nearly twenty thousand followers. And in the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-four, reached nearly two hundred and eighty-nine thousand total people, which is up thirty-six percent from the fourth quarter of twenty-three, and a total of more than twelve thousand nine hundred interactions, such as reactions, comments, up thirty-four percent from the fourth quarter of last year. Our primary goal in two thousand and twenty-four, just updating you on where things stand there. We've already begun the process of redesigning Harrisburg PA.gov. Excuse me. We selected Revise, following our thorough review of more than thirty companies, including eight virtual meetings and proposals. Revise is a minority business enterprise. Their quote came in under our twenty-thousand-dollar budget, which showed us that they were cost-conscious. We did reference checks with other cities as well and boroughs they work with, including Carlisle, and similarly-sized state capitals like Olympia, Washington, and Des Moines, Iowa. Their proposal indicates a twenty-one to twenty-seven-week development. However, when you factor in time on the front end for legal to review a contract and time on the back end for additional training, we expect something towards the end of the year, if not the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-five by the time we go live. This is not something we're going to want to rush, because this is going to be there for a long time. We have completed our first Quarter One goal of adding a new digital component to the atrium, reorganizing the MLK Museum, and turning the underutilized portion of the windows into a press conference and wedding space. We continue to work towards a new franchise agreement with Comcast. The Law Bureau is leading these efforts. And we are in discussion with Comcast to hold a period of public comment so residents can share what they want to see out of their public city channel. At WHBG, we continue to work also with Councilwoman Rawls to develop a new short series, which is essentially a produced version of the upcoming events she reads into the new business of council meetings. We need to work through some opposing schedules, but I'm confident that we can make something work. Through the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-four, the Communications Bureau has spent twenty-two point nine percent of its budget. No unforeseen purchases. The largest chunk of that still needs to be spent, though twenty thousand dollars set aside for a redesign of the city's website. Some community engagement notes to tell you about. We are constantly involved in the community by virtue of us having a camera. And some of the things that we have done throughout the first quarter of the year include features on the city's Ice and Fire Festival, the Bunny Blast, which was held two weekends ago. We did a special on Read Across America Week using city staff, followed around Mayor Williams as she visited Rowland Academy for a muffins with mist. And there's a lot more. All you need to go is onto our YouTube channel and see the amount of work that Asher and Emily have put together. Lastly, we did have a video, which went semi-viral on TikTok recently that we did with the Dauphin County Recycling Plant and the work that our Public Works team is doing to take glass there now. It's something that the recycle center wasn't doing before. Our video that we put on social media went semi-viral. Not all the way viral, but enough that we get a lot of compliments about that. So that is the long way of showing you a lot of what we have been going on in our Communications Bureau for the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-four. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your report. I do have a few questions before I open the floor to my colleagues. First, I wanted to revisit the website. Two questions regarding the website. I learned that, I guess through some market research or targeted marketing campaign, that the city received, the city website receives more hits from people investigating the city over city residents.
I can't comment on that.
Okay. You share so much other data. I thought you might be aware that that's occurring, but okay. Let's go to Revise. You mentioned that they are a minority-owned business. Where are they located?
Troy, Michigan.
Troy, Michigan?
Yes.
Okay. And of the more than thirty companies that you heard from, how many were local?
When you say local, do you mean city of Harrisburg or seven-one-seven Philadelphia area?
Seven-one-seven Harrisburg.
There was one company that was based out of Lower Paxton Township. Outside of that, I believe there was one in Center County. There were a couple in the Philadelphia area. There were no companies that reached out to us that were city of Harrisburg local.
Thank you. Oh, I wanted to revisit the slide. You mentioned your deputy director. You read a hundred cases, but that noted eighty-six cases were translated. So I just wanted to confirm what the correct number was.
Excuse me. She assisted residents with nearly a hundred cases in the first quarter of the year. Fifteen documents. I can go back very quickly. Eighty-six cases translated. Forty-two of them were in codes. Seventeen of them were three-one-one questions. Thirteen of them were zoning questions. Ten mercantile, four public works. In addition, she translated fifteen documents from the Codes Bureau and Health Office. And that's typically when she translates full documents that are, those are multiple pages worth of documents, not necessarily just a page here and there. And then description briefs. I can find out for you exactly what description briefs are and have her, excuse me, have her send examples to council on the work that she is doing.
I'm curious. I think that would be helpful, since we have a strong interest in being inclusive.
I, I will say this. I'd be happy to go into greater detail off the record due to her privacy. But in the first quarter of the year, she dealt with immense personal, family issues, which took her physically away from city hall for an extended period of time. So those numbers typically are higher. And I think you will see that in the second quarter of the year.
Oh, no, not discrediting any of her work at all. I just wanted to confirm to make sure which number was accurate. And I think you meant Rowland.
Did I say Rowland?
I don't know what you said.
I think I, I believe I said Rowland. Pardon me, Rowland Academy.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions. I'll open the floor to my colleagues.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers. No questions. I just wanted to commend you and your staff on the Read Across America Week. I did see that online. I thought that was a nice feature for the community and to, you know, watch all the staff here at the city read. So I see a couple of them in the audience now, but it was really entertaining. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers. I think my questions were already asked, so I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls, any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers. And thank you for being here. I'm Director Menzel. I don't have any questions. I know we are trying to work something out with a segment. Our schedules and my schedule right now is hectic. So I look forward to us doing something. But no, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Um, no, not current, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Jones, any questions?
Absolutely. How you doing today, sir?
I'm doing well. Yourself?
Good. My question is, and I know you seem to have scheduling conflict with Councilwoman Rawls right now. But I think you and I touched on a couple conversations where we would like to see some local, not just some of the resources that are here in the community that some people may not be aware of. I think we can take full advantage of Channel Twenty with some new nonprofits and some of the ones that have been here previously that may offer new services. And also, you know, one of the big things that we as a, as a body are looking to do is try to increase some of the participation with some of the local vendors with some of these contracts that are coming into our area. Be nice to try to highlight some of those individuals and give them an opportunity, kind of put their face out there and their names out there for potential, any potential RFPs or any potential businesses that can, that can be acquired through information like that. So how, how could we be able to do something like that?
Having that discussion in this setting, I mean, we, that's a discussion that will take an hour.
Is it something that we?
Absolutely. Absolutely, a hundred percent, yes. The, the great thing that I've discovered about Channel Twenty is that it is very much a blank canvas. And while over the course of the last two years, we have started to color it in a little bit, there is so much untapped potential that we could use it for. I have to be careful, just in full honesty, that I'm not overworking Asher and Emily. It is a two-person team. I try to help out where I can, given my TV background, my ability to sit behind the camera from time to time. But at the same time, our schedules right now are very full, as Councilwoman Rawls alluded to. That being said, I never say no to anything. There's always a workaround. At the end of the day, it is the city's channel. And city council, as a representative of the people, absolutely should have a say in, in the content that goes out there. So I am one hundred percent looking forward to having those conversations with you and other members of council on ways we can add additional content to Channel Twenty.
I just would cut in to say, cuz it kind of answers your question with the segment. I just would cut in to say, because it kind of answers your question with the segment I want to do with Director Menzel is to kind of boost up what the community is doing for them to come on for interviews and say what's happening this weekend. And if they're having program to come on and talk about it, but also if their business is within the community, for them to come on and speak about their business to show our community, residents and business owners some, I don't want to just say respect, but being able to publicize themselves and say these great things that are happening. So that might go a little towards what you're saying.
Absolutely.
That, but that's the segment we're trying to get worked out that.
I call that turning the lights on to the city.
Turn, yeah. That could be a good name for it.
We're brainstorming here, here we go.
Letting people know what's happening here. You know, there are a lot of things and a lot of services that people miss from, I would say, the typical way that we communicate today. So I think this would just be a great idea. But I would think we could have these conversations and I think something once every other quarter or something like that, just not to bombard you or overwork your staff. So yeah, I look forward to having those conversations. Thank you.
Thank you. As I mentioned prior to the start of the meeting, there will be no quarterly report for the Office of Equity and Compliance received this evening. We will now move to the Building and Housing Committee. I will defer to our Building and Housing Committee Chair, Chair Davis.
Thank you, President Bowers. Director Hill is here this evening and she will give our, her report for the Building and Housing Committee. Good evening, Director Hill.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Denise Hill, Director of Department of Building and Housing Development. For the description, again, this is the full description of the Department of DBHD. I just wanted to simply highlight that DBHD is the Oversight and Administration of Four Main HUD-funded Programs. Those are LED, CDBG, Home Program, and ESG. And CDBG is Community Development Block Grant, and then ESG is Emergency Solutions Grant. Next, for the quarterly summary for Quarter One of 2024, we see highlights, events, achievements, and changes here. Just wanted to highlight for the record, five programs were appropriated under Resolution 172024 within the last couple of weeks. So that is related to the American Rescue Plan Act Funds for ARPA. And then also for Home Development, we have received three applications. These are the first new applications that we've received probably since 2018. So we are, currently, we have home development construction projects underway, but those were the 2018, 2019 projects. So we have three new ones that are currently under review. And then here you'll see the progress towards the annual goals. Broad Street Market, as everyone is aware, is underway in reconstruction after the tragic fire back in July. So just wanted to update that the temporary structure is close to opening to the public. And then you may have seen that there were donations that came in to also positively impact the stone building over the last couple of weeks. And then I definitely wanted to highlight Capital Area Coalition on Homelessness and the Winter Overnight Shelter. That's what ran from December 1st to March 31st, recently closed. And so closeout numbers will be forthcoming. So the organizations that ran those are compiling the final numbers to show how many individuals and families were served throughout that time period. And here I cleaned up numbers from the last quarterly report. As you know, our federal fiscal year is different than the calendar year and different than the city's fiscal year. So what you see here shows the true year-to-date spend for January 1 to April, oh, I'm sorry, March 31st of 2024. We're on track to be spending and making sure that we are hitting as far as benchmarks throughout the year for the calendar year. I just wanted to re-mention again the Blueprint Communities Kickoff. We have an event coming up April 29th. That is a grant, it's a collaboration to do some upgrades in the Allison Hill section of the city. And then also Choice Neighborhood Planning Grant, that is still underway. That's a two-year project. So the Early Action Project, I just wanted to highlight in that grant of $500,000, there is $200,000 that is set aside for an early action project. So that essentially is for something tangible and visible that the residents of Hooverer Home and Hall Manor area of the city will be able to see progress moving forward until the implementation grant is applied for. And the implementation grant is what, if once applied and awarded, would be the actual construction of the housing unit. So the planning grant is to reimagine it, but the implementation grant would be what the actual construction would be. And then coordination with the county on the Home ARP, so that is different than the Home Development. And then the county released their application yesterday. And as you all are aware, the city received 1.75 million and that would be going towards, as recommended, would be going towards four housing projects that fit the criteria to bring those to fruition. So again, just for the record, that's the Veterans of Pennsylvania Tiny Home Village, Brethren Housing, Thrive Housing, and Harrisburg Fair Housing Council. The complement remains the same as last quarter. Within the department, there haven't been any changes as far as staffing. So that is there. And then lastly, this is again the ways that we communicate with the, with the community at this time. So we did not participate in any major events during this last quarter. So that's the only change from the last presentation I did. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Hill, for your report. I will open up for questions and I will start to my right with Councilwoman Daniels. Do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Green.
Thank you. I don't really have many questions. I do have one, I guess, kind of question about the Choice Neighborhood Planning Grant.
Sure.
If I'm correct, that's supposed to encompass more than just like the projects in South Harrisburg, right? It's supposed to encompass like the surrounding communities as well.
Yes. So technically, it is South Harrisburg. So the Hooverer Homes was, were actually qualified for the actual HUD grant, but the grant is to positively impact the immediate adjacent community.
Okay. I was just wondering what outreach has been done to the adjacent community? I know when speaking with a lot of the residents, they don't even know this is going on.
So a lot has been, so there was a survey that was sent out. It was voluntary to submit and give back. There are community events that are held just about every other month or so. There are like family engagement nights that are also held. And then a lot of the communication in writing has been within Hooverer and Hall Manor. And that's just because that's going out in communication directly from HHA.
Okay. I would just suggest maybe the city could be a little more proactive in helping to get some of the information out to the adjacent communities even, and like the trash billing, perhaps just narrowing it down to like that specific zip code or something like that, where we're able to get some information out to the communities. I live in the community, it's technically touched by this, and I've heard nothing outside of what I've got, like what I went out to get myself. I talked to the project manager and he didn't really seem to recognize that it was supposed to be outside of just like the projects area. So I think it's really important to make sure the entire community is part of that buy-in as well, because it's going to be a big project. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. President Bowers, questions?
Are you at liberty to share? You noted that the market temporary structure is close to opening to the public. Is there a definite date?
Not that I have, no.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davis, and good evening, Director Hill. Thank you for being here. I just have about two questions. My first question was, I wanted to know, is there a unhoused residence committee? Is there a committee that speaks about some solutions or even areas of concern that they're having, which includes them on the committee? Is there a type of committee?
Yes. You're looking at most of it? No, yeah, so outside of, you know, the Capital Area Coalition on Homelessness, my office in tandem with several others here in City Hall. So as it relates to the encampments specifically, I have gotten tremendous support from the Community Services Division, Deputy Chief Young, the Harrisburg Police Department as a whole, Public Works, Dave West and his team. We are meeting every other week with stakeholders from here at the city, the county, the state, as well as a shelter provider. So just this week alone, I'll probably have three or four different meetings about encampments, how we can assist with the issue, making sure that we are doing what we can. So as you know, City Hall is responsible for public safety, sanitation, and fire. So the, as far as the human services, we work very closely with the service providers, Dauphin County Human Services. We have great partners and we are meeting constantly with them. And it's not just me here at City Hall. So there are actually a couple different, not official committees, as you call them, but absolutely, there, there are a ton of.
There's a lot of meetings going on.
Yes, yes.
Within these, and I guess I'm looking more at a committee standpoint. I understand the meetings, but just so that the unhoused population has a voice within those committees. Are they on any of them where they're able to speak up on what they need or what they want or what they're looking at from the city?
Yes, so it, we do have representation of unsheltered residents on the Board of Cache. That is actually a part of the bylaws. So someone on the board with voting rights has to be on, on the board. As well as I have talked to a number of current residents of the encampment to try to make sure that, I keep saying that this is the plan that the city rolls out for encampments in our unsheltered neighbors. It's not something that can happen to them, but we need to make sure that we are respecting the different needs. There isn't going to be, you know, one plan that works, but making sure that we are hearing directly from, you know, because my perspective of what will work and, you know, other stakeholders just is not, there's no cookie cutter answer for it. So yes, long way to answer your question.
No, no, that, that was, that was fine. I just wanted to know if their voices were being heard or if they were at the table, because it's hard to create solutions for a group of individuals and if you don't hear what they have to say, right? So that's why I was, I just wanted to know.
And it's insensitive and counterproductive.
Yeah.
The resolution.
Not getting anything done.
Yes.
You don't know what they need, but thank you, that answered my question. My second question was, when you said the early action project, like you said, is something that, that community can see. So would it be something like, especially within the Hoover Homes, like updating their playground system? Or putting?
Did you say the pool? Yes, so the pool is actually one that has been talked about extensively as well.
I was trying to do something immediate, because those playgrounds, I mean.
Yes.
I took my daughter there the other day and I was like, oh my gosh.
So one of the, one of the challenges, if you will, about the playgrounds specifically is that HHA is, they have to monitor, upgrade, you know, and maintain those. So we're actually looking at playgrounds within the actual community. So just outside of not just Hooverer Home and Hall Manor. So looking at one near the Green Belt, so that the entire community can positively, you know, be impacted by it. Also, another suggestion that was looked into was providing assistance to the 13th Street Corridor. So there are some businesses along there just down from Foose. So being able to do a community garden or help with the stores. There are at least two stores that are currently in there, recognizing that that area is a food desert. So possibly looking at beefing up access to fresh groceries.
Okay, okay. So that's what immediate action would look like, okay. And I think that was it. Because Councilwoman Green asked a question I also had was, are you, what does that look like for the adjacent neighborhoods? Are they getting any communication? So, okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rawls. Councilwoman Jones, any questions? Oh, yes, sorry about that. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions for Director Hill?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Director Hill, for joining us this evening. Just to kind of echo the sentiments of Councilwoman Rawls, is it mandated by policy or ordinance where we have to use other providers? Or could we kind of get innovative, then kind of come up with our own providers for this specific issue of the unhoused population?
It's not by policy or by law of which providers can be utilized, no.
Would it be something you'd be willing to do to have like a pro-Harrisburg type of initiative or group where we could actually come up with some great solutions? Not saying the groups that are currently working on it are not doing a great job. I just feel more should be done sooner. And I know everyone's doing the best they can, but just my heart goes out, as I know everyone else's does. But yeah, sometimes it just kind of strikes me. I just, I don't have the answer to that.
Absolutely. I'll email you first thing tomorrow morning.
Thank you. And then also, you said improvements on Allison Hill. You know specifically what they may be. Is it by Molten Square? Is it further down towards the south?
So the, the specific location has not yet been identified. That's actually a part of when the kickoff event occurs. So there will be the basically establishment of a committee that will drive what those upgrades will be.
Awesome. And then you had mentioned the Home ARP. It's slightly different from the Home Improvement. Could you just explain that a little bit more for me, please?
Sure. Prior to the American Rescue Plan Act Funds, the ARPA Funds, there were CV Funds or COVID Relief Funds. So we got it for CDBG, ESG, and then also Home. The difference between Home Development and Home ARP, Home ARP is specific to, there are only certain organizations that can benefit from this money because the regulations state that it has to be for construction or renovation of affordable housing for individuals that are coming straight into street home, coming out of street homelessness, excuse me. So it's very different than a developer coming in and building affordable housing and getting the subsidy. It has to be an organization like the four that were named who are transitioning previously unsheltered individuals directly into a housing option.
Got you. Would that also include maybe offenders returning home from prison? Does that have like the same benefit? Or would you have to be strictly like unhoused for a certain amount of time? Does that have like the same benefit or would you have to be strictly like unhoused for a certain amount of time?
So you do have to be unhoused and the, there can be individuals who are in that situation that are transferring into it. However, typically what happens is they are already coming through a system and they're, they're working whether it's parole or something like that. So we don't find that it's so much, they have to have a home plan. So there aren't really organizations that I am aware of that are going straight from the system, the prison system as far as reentry directly into unsheltered. I do know that it, it does occur, but I'm not aware. I'm not currently working with any organizations that are trying to bridge that gap.
Got you, got you. Thank you, Director Hill. No further questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jones.
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman Davis. Director Hill, just something real simple, the CDBG and the ESG workshops. Is there a date?
Yes, and I just breezed right past that, I'm so sorry. So we just nailed down that it will be at the end of May. We are currently looking at tentatively May 21st and 22nd. So just because the times have not been solidified exactly for folks to participate, but we are going to have a save the date as soon as the exact times. We typically offer four sessions, one in the morning and one in the afternoon on both days to accommodate schedules of organizations.
Okay, and the other part of that is just can you give a quick overview so our viewers and listeners can hear what this is?
Sure. So, Community Development Block Grant or CDBG are funds that come in, at this point go to nonprofit organizations that we have to either do LMI or LMA. So that is everything HUD funded in my office, LMI is a low to moderate income individual. And then LMA is a low to moderate area. So they have to be able to receive the funds, they have to be serving one of those two categories. So that's CDBG. We're thinking after school programs, case management, wraparound services, anything along those lines. So you think of the nonprofit organizations, it's a subsidy so that they are able to continue their operations and serve the, the community. ESG is an emergency solutions grant. Those funds are specific for homeless shelters. So it is greatly reduced of who can actually apply for that. So those are the YWCA's, the Shalom House, the Brethren Housing, they have to be an actual emergency shelter. And then funds also go to CCU or Christian Churches United. So they oversee the coordinated entry system for the whole entire region. But anyone needing to access homeless services are able to go to the help office or CCU and then they are able to then kind of refer out. So because those funds are so limited on what they can be used for, only certain organizations are able to apply.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's important to try to put that out there because a lot of people that think that the city just is absolutely doing nothing about some of those issues with the unhoused and just explaining with those grants who they affect and who are able to apply for them, I think is vital for our community to hear.
And that's a great point that you make because when you see the numbers on the chart that was up, you see 1.8 million dollars of CDBG. However, only about 240,000 of that is able to go to nonprofit organizations. So the city is not able to use the bulk of that money to go to nonprofit organizations. And other things that it's used for are the demolition with the codes office, also the Section 208 debt service loan. So there are a number of things that CDBG covers, but you see this big, large number and then you kind of see a miniscule amount of it going to nonprofits. But that's why it's actually set up by HUD and only a certain percentage of what your annual allotment is allowed to go to organizations.
Yeah, thank you. I think again, that's very important for us to know. And for sure, a lot of people also don't realize that a lot of that money that they're looking for the unhoused can come from the county. So have to see your commissioners, they get about 30 million dollars a year to spend some of that money. So it's a collective effort and I'm glad to hear everybody's at the table, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. I have two questions, Director Hill. Okay, you mentioned that the homeless shelter reports would be coming in, how soon or?
So typically, we have about 90 days after the close of winter overnight shelter to report back to HUD. So it'll be 90 days from two days ago.
Okay, and would those reports include the CDBG and ESG funding? And tell us exactly what money was spent on what for the housing?
No, so no money from the city goes directly to winter overnight shelter. This is above and beyond what the city funds for ESG. So there aren't any funding streams for winter overnight shelter. This literally is all of the service providers coming to the table to meet the need so that folks don't freeze over the coldest months of the winter.
Okay, and we certainly appreciate them. And then with the coordination with the county referencing the home ARP application, are you aware of the tiny homes forecast in other areas throughout the region?
So there are actually several types of tiny home villages, not just all throughout the region, but there are some that are also being proposed for the city. But veterans of PA is a very specific one because it'll be about 20 or 25 homes specific for veterans. So that organization has a tighter, more stringent eligibility, if you will, of who will be able to access those. Now the other ones, the other tiny home villages that are proposed and trying to find the funding are for unsheltered without the veteran designation.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I don't have any other questions. Does anyone else have any more questions, council members? Thank you very much for your report.
Have a great evening.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you. As I mentioned prior to the start of the meeting, the Community and Economic Development Committee, there is no quarterly report for the Bureau of Planning that will be received this evening. The final committee business we will hear will come from the Public Safety Committee. I will defer to our Public Safety Committee Chair, Chair Jones.
Yes, thank you, President Bowers. I see Commissioner and Deputy Chief Young. Come on up, come on down. This is regarding Resolution 20 of 2024. You want to read it?
Certainly. Resolution 20 of 2024. A resolution ratifying the 2023 Federal Justice Assistance Grant application and authorizing the City of Harrisburg to enter into a sub-recipient agreement for Dolphin County to administer $61,594 in awarded grant funds.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Commissioner, Deputy Chief Young?
Good evening. I'm Deputy Chief Young. So this grant is a yearly grant that we enter into with the county. It's basically, or what I was told was a pass-through grant, so it's awarded to the county and then we receive it from them. This grant is applied, is broken down into a couple, a couple different sections which cover, and this is yearly, it covers this, would be victim witness. So we pay half their salary, which is 2603. The total of that would have been 52, 603 annual. So again, we cover half of that. We cover the total benefits for them, which would be 44, or I'm sorry, 4,494. All right, which gives you 30,796. The grant also covers our NIBRIS. So as we enter into that, it tracks the stats, crime stats that we input into our RMS or Record Management System. The money also, that's 8602 that goes to NIBRIS. Crime Watch would be 4,800 or it's 400 dollars a month for 12 months for the web portal subscription. The other part of this would be 7,000 dollars would go to Planet or Power Time. And basically what that is, is a scheduling system for us with the end of life coming with Metro. This gives us the ability to get in there. Power Time or Planet has other features that we'll end up using as far as checks, court management or subpoena issues. It deals with Quartermaster or property tracking as well. The last thing, which this one was slated for, now this is a change from last year, this year it would be used for Cody Cobra. What we're thinking after we tried to get the police bureau to use Cody Cobra, so basically Cody Cobra is a, is a platform where everybody, so local agencies around here with other RMS or other reports go into one system. So you would be able to access that through Cody Cobra, which is another research mechanism that would help us connect. So you'd be able to run whatever you were investigating and then be able to come up with information and see if it's connected to Lancaster or other places in the area. We would keep a couple of those subscriptions and mainly they would be in our Criminal Investigation Division. The county right now covered that bill last year, I think DA's office decided it was too expensive to cover it. So we were trying to, they pushed that out to whoever was willing to participate on that. So we decided that last, a couple of months ago, we decided that using this money coming from the county to, to support Cody Cobra was beneficial. Again, after, after doing some checking and asking some questions and putting it out there, our CID or Criminal Investigation Division seems to be the only section within the Bureau that would use Cody Cobra. So that's what it would cover and that's, that's what it is. Again, it's, it's a yearly grant that we get. It was the same thing, I believe last year, instead of getting Cody Cobra, which the county paid for that, we were able to apply that money towards a vehicle, so it helped us with that as well. So I'm open to questions.
Yeah, thank you. Just something simple for me, I did take time to look at the exhibit very detailed. It's a lot of numbers, I hear a lot of percentages, so I think this grant is worthy for you guys to continue to get. So one of the things is like with the Crime Watch website, for those that don't have accessibility, as you know, some people have the broadband issues, right? How could some of this information, other than the website, how would it typically get to those residents and those victims, may I say?
So a lot of it is posted, so we'll post a lot of it. It's, it's another avenue for us to, to send information out. How it gets there, I can find out, but for the most part, it would be like, well, it's just a platform that we, we would, we use it heavily, it's heavily followed. So that's, we, we just push the information out, whether that's wanted people or whether that's information that we're getting to the public or any information that we would, we would use. I mean, Matt is another good source with that. Between Crime Watch and then what the city has is how that information is pushed out.
I think this also ties into what, what, what the court system does as well because I think a lot of people, if you are a victim, you will get this information via the mail system. Or as you stated too, the officers that are maybe dealing with the individual that may be going through this crisis. My other question is, and this may not be for you to answer, but I'm looking on here and I see that Catherine Kilgore from CJAB was the grant where she's the person that administered, but she's not here anymore.
Correct.
I don't know how you replace this woman, but is she replaced?
She is not replaced at this point, so I don't know how you replace her and that's a problem that the county's working through. So that was part of this. In previous years, she did a lot of the work on this and we just sort of kind of, you know, after, after it passed through council, she was mainly.
We got lucky.
Right, so the, the issue is still being worked out through the county and I mean, I, I think that's not just one person, that's a multiple, I want to say almost a small committee.
Right.
That would.
So this does happen. I'm only asking that because this happens annually, right?
Correct.
So hopefully, they can get somebody to, because as you can see, reading this exhibit, I know that the, the, the community can't see it, but it is very detailed. Yeah, but that's all. I have no further questions. I'll open it up to my colleagues and I'll start to my far right and go to the Councilwoman Daniels.
I have no questions, thank you.
Councilwoman Davis.
I don't have any questions. Thank you for your report.
Vice President Green.
Thank you very much for being here tonight. I don't have any questions for you.
President Bowers.
Good evening. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Rawls.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. I guess I'll break the, the, I'll be the breaker of it, sorry. But I just have one quick question to make sure I'm matching it up right online because it is very meaty. It's also called JAG?
It is. So it's a federal JAG grant, so it's, we're in, I'm sorry with the acronyms again.
I just said it myself, you and I on these acronyms, okay. Because in the paperwork, they say JAG a lot and I'm like, I mean, I know there's a TV show that used to be called JAG, but I don't think this is it. So then I'm just making sure, Justice Assistance Grant.
Correct, that's, yeah. And you'll have to forgive me, I'm probably going to continue to do that as I come up here.
That's what you do to me, it's all right. And I'm going to always say that you do to me.
It's a habit.
It's okay.
Yeah, and you got to understand, this grant here is also shared with.
Other municipalities.
With Terra, but we get the majority of it.
Yeah, that was messing up too, because I'm seeing all these numbers, I'm like, that's not what our number is, that we don't get 84, you know, but then I'm looking, oh, this is other municipalities.
Correct, and the main thing, and we'll go back to Councilman Jones, the main thing is we have our own in-house victim witness person. So if, and again, I had the opportunity to look at the website, we are listed on there as a resource where people can come to the Harrisburg Bureau of Police to speak with the dedicated in-house victim witness person.
Okay, that was my only question.
Yeah, and they're very helpful. I mean, and the information gets out again through, when we, when we show up to take reports and stuff like that, that information gets out through the officers.
All right, thank you for further explaining that. Thank you. That's it for me.
Yeah, they, they're very, I want to say, I could say thorough. You know, somebody breaks into your car, you'll get a letter, I'd be like, I don't need this, you mean, a victim, but.
It's, yeah, I was a victim. There's, there's a lot more resources on there, so which is very good.
Councilman Rodriguez, you have any questions?
Thank you, Chair Jones. Thank you, Deputy Young, our Commissioner Carter, as always. No questions, just more of a statement. I think the Cobra Cody is amazing. Just to be able to transfer that real-time data and not only just transfer it with other intergovernmental agencies, but it will translate the language of the data as well, which I think is huge for a multicultural city like Harrisburg is. So kudos to you gentlemen and keep up the great work. Nothing further, Chair Jones, thank you.
Thank you. All right, gentlemen. Thank you, appreciate you.
Have a good evening.
All right. I apologize, I recommend that this moves forward to our next legislative session. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move forward with our agenda with public comment. Just a few housekeeping notes before we begin, please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. Mr. Parker will serve as our timekeeper. You will have four minutes to share your comments. I will begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment?
Good evening.
Sorry, can you please, there you go.
That better?
Yes, thank you.
So, Brian Keisling, Midtown, just two of us tonight. When I'm done speaking, we are going to leave to join the rest of the Harrisburg Palestine Coalition at a different meeting we're currently having. We have community members who are interested in organizing and affecting real change here in Harrisburg. But first, we did want to stop by just so we don't give the false impression that we've forgotten about our resolution or moved on from it. The way we see it, there are. The way we see it, there are really only three possible reasons why things would have ground to a halt with the resolution. The first is that an outside influence. Most likely the mayor's office or someone in coordination with the mayor's office has put their thumb on the scale behind the scenes to stop the resolution. Obviously that would be inappropriate and I'm sure I speak for all of us when I say that we hope that's not how our government works. The second reason is that Solicitor Grover has advised you to shelve it because he feels it's either inappropriate or legally dubious for this body to act on the resolution. If that's the case, I respectfully suggest that this is bad legal advice as demonstrated by the fact that over one hundred other solicitors in over one hundred other cities and municipalities didn't stop those resolutions from going forward. As we all know, none of those hundred-plus resolutions and counting resulted in any legal repercussions. The third reason we see that this resolution would be stopped is that this council is afraid of sparking a little controversy. I personally hope that's not the reason. I think it would be the saddest. We all know it's the right thing to do and we all know it's popular, but I've said that a thousand times at this point. So there's really no need to get into it again, other than to say that none of you struck me as people who are afraid of doing what's obviously right. So hopefully that isn't the reason. Whichever one is the reason, or if it's some combination of the three, the fact that this resolution seems to be dying behind closed doors is a problem. So I'll close with some respectful unsolicited advice. We get the sense that this council is not used to a, a large number of people showing up week after week for the same issue and insisting on it being brought forward. We know that usually public comments are one-offs from individuals and it's good and appropriate that those people come here, but we think you all are not accustomed to something bigger like you've seen in the past few weeks with us. And I get that that might feel overwhelming, but I would suggest that you consider the possibility that what's happening with our resolution is the reason other groups don't come to council for serious issues that council should hear about. There's no faith in the system. There's no faith that they'll be listened to, let alone that action will be taken. And unfortunately, what's happening with our resolution is going to confirm for them that it's just not worth it. So yes, you should pass our resolution because it's the right thing to do, because it is the result of collaboration between a wide variety of communities, including the Jewish and Muslim communities, and because it directly impacts Harrisburg. But you should also do it to show city residents that council isn't a waste of time and that all these issues get the public attention and acknowledgement from council that they deserve. So that's what I've got. As always, if I'm wrong and need to be corrected, or if you want to get in touch to discuss how to move it forward or address any misconceptions about what the resolution actually says, you know how to reach us and we certainly hope that you do.
You are wrong and you need to be corrected.
By all means, if they wanna set up a meeting, they are welcome to.
Happy to, but you are wrong and you need to be corrected. What you are saying is inaccurate. In New York, the House Committee has drug in the people who voted on their resolution down to House subpoenas in DC. Hold the legal community in, the, you know, of advisories. That's the beginning, it's not the end. So I'm saying, they, they say there's no legal repercussions is, is, is an advocate's point of view and I respect that you are an advocate. But there are issues that you're stating as an advocate as opposed to, as fact and they are merely pieces of fact. They are not close to the whole story. And so, and I, I, I respect the group that you're with, I respect the passion of your thing, but you advocate in a way that selects the facts that you put forth to make your point, to try to get to the point you want. But the same thing is true with the document you presented. And you are not the only point of view, the city here is from mentee point of view, but you, you present it each week as if these are established facts. And I'm just telling you, someone needs to just tell you the reality is what you're saying in part is inaccurate and you need to say it publicly. And that's what I am doing.
But that's part of council's job and that's part of your job and you need to advise us and we, these are conversations that are, you, you failed to advise us on our ethical obligations and now you're arguing with the constituent about whether their legal advice is right or wrong. He's not an attorney, that's your job and.
And I've given you legal advice.
I'm happy to amend my statement. A hundred-plus resolutions and one legal repercussion that hasn't actually been completed by the sounds of it. Like I said, we're really happy to meet with any of you about this, to keep it going forward. That's our view, so thank you very much. Oh, we're happy to meet with Grover. He told us he wouldn't meet with us, which is fine. But you know where we stand, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to offer public comment?
Good evening. My name is Emmanuel Bayard Thomas. I live on, um, Allison Hill District area, uh, Sixteenth and Chestnut. I'd like to address one and two issues. One about the programs that need to be ran in our community in regards to our children. There's so many, uh, people come up here and speak about this money and different things that organizations need to join in and, uh, foster a better, uh, life for our children in our community as a whole. I just wanna be able to, uh, understand the legality of being able to join in with this money that hasn't been allocated already with, um, nonprofits. Because there's some nonprofits that's starting up for homeless, uh, unhoused individuals as well as, um, she spoke about individuals coming home from incarceration that they're on probation or parole. Some max out and they don't have any probation officer or parole officer, anybody to help or assist them and they're unhoused. So that's an issue that she might not know about that needs to be addressed. As well as just joining in with this TV station, Channel Twenty. There's so many individuals that need to be on there because it's too much going on in our community that our community don't know about. So I definitely thank council members for producing this beautiful, um, stage for all of us to be able to speak. Too many of us need to be here and join in. So I'd like to thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment?
Good evening. My name is Mark Giles. I'm the Executive Director of Heart to Heart Social Development, Inc. I'm not here to, um, be long-winded about what I, what I offer. I'm here to offer my services to the city council because I wanna first commend y'all for the job that y'all are doing as far as the unhoused population in this city. I'm uniquely qualified because I was homeless for ten years myself. I now own a construction company and I am looking to offer my services to the city, not because I'm looking for money. I'm alright in that department. I'm looking to be able to help you guys come up with a solution to, uh, provide the housing that these people need. You know, I know that when, uh, you talk about, um, low-income housing, when these properties are developed, most, most of the property goes to the median income and not to low income. So the, at the rate that they're being produced is not adequate enough for the people that's still out there. I have a, um, a solution for that, for the short-term and the long-term and I would like to offer that to y'all. I don't know how to get in touch with y'all, uh, because I'm, I'm fairly new to the city of Harrisburg, but I'm not new to this situation or this circumstance. And I believe that it's my duty as a man of God to stand up and do what I can to help y'all get this problem solved. Thank you.
Thank you. If you wouldn't mind, just for the meeting record, either sharing your address or the vicinity in which you live within the city.
I live at sixty-four North Twelve Street. I don't know the part of the city.
It's fine, thank you, you're good. If you wouldn't mind, uh, waiting, uh, just a few minutes after the meeting to speak to our Building and Housing Committee Chair?
Uh, Ms., Ms., uh.
Councilwoman Davis?
Sure, sure.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section?
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
I'm Rhonda Mays. I live in North Allison Hill. So first I wanted to give my heartfelt gratitude to council, in particular President Bowers, for honoring my mother, uh, upon her, uh, passing with the proclamation from city council. I'm sure she would have said, what did I do to deserve this? Because she was a very humble person, but, um, we also recognize that her husband had a very dangerous job as, um, all police officers spouses do. And he wouldn't have been able to rise through the ranks as the first, um, African-American captain without, um, my mother by his side, keeping the home stable and peaceful so he could leave distress in the street. So, um, the proclamation was a surprise. I didn't expect it, but it was wonderful and she would have been so proud. And so I just want to take this time to thank you very much for that. Now, um, briefly, I want to speak as the Director of the Fair Housing Council of the Capital Region, address twenty-one hundred North Sixth Street. The council has recently, uh, been getting an extraordinary number of calls about, uh, specific property, um, named, uh, River Trails that was previously known as Linden Terrace. Uh, I'm sure council is very much aware of the issues in that particular building. But, um, I just wanted to speak about it briefly and, um, just ask council to keep a specific eye on that. I don't know at this point what the city would be able to do to relieve some of the suffering of the residents in that building. But I'm sure if we all work together and communicate, that we'll be able to find, um, some sort of, uh, solution, even if it's temporary while the building is being rehabilitated. At this time, the council really, uh, the Fair Housing Council really has no answers to give to the residents that call us multiple times on a weekly basis. But I did speak with one of the residents today and suggest that, um, similar that to what we did with, uh, the meeting, uh, the property adjacent to us, Governor Square, is to have a meeting at the council and to invite the public officials and property management and, um, codes and whomever to listen to the residents and to basically, um, give them any information that you may have or possibly some suggestions. These are folks that are low-income. They don't have big voices within the community, but they are residents and they deserve to live in dignity, which right now they are not. You have elderly people that cannot receive their medication or food, they're mobile. They cannot get downstairs to get to doctor's appointments. They can't, you know, have food delivered to them on the upper floors. They're in wheelchairs and the elevators break constantly. There's infestation issues. So it's, it's a, a severe problem right now. So I would like to reach out to city council within the next week and invite you to a meeting. Hopefully we'll, I'll be able to get everyone together and we can decide upon a date and, um, we can have that discussion with the residents at the office. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer public comment?
Good evening. Louis Butts, Allison Hill. Thank everybody, I'm thankful for this opportunity. But I didn't want the Communications Director to leave cause he's vital for all this stuff to, to be translated. All these committee issues, all the feelings of, um, our residents, communication is vital. And that's what everybody is saying. So let's make it work. I know they may not be, may be short-staffed, but we have to have alternatives. We have SciTech, we have some beautiful, brilliant kids. There's institutions in the city of Harrisburg that can work things out and make our systems better. It's important, it's imperative that we have skits. All the information that is, is relayed, that everybody's journeying for has to be on that Channel Twenty. You know, everything has to be on there. We can do skits, the officers can do skits on how to reduce situations that, um, reduce violence situations. We have to teach our community how to resolve situations for themselves before it goes so far and that the, the officers are involved before it gets that far. Our citizens need to learn how to deal with situations. All that CBG money, everything has to be translated on Channel Twenty. Whether it's, um, everybody's acting it out, but it has to be visible and it has to be able to be digested. You know, everybody's not up here, but we have to have a medium education level so people can digest it. The children, the things that they do, that Channel Twenty should be constantly moving. There should be no dead time. And that's what I'm gonna try to help out with. Because their solutions is right in our, right, right around the corner. We just have to do it. It's okay. Let's just do it. Now, you know, SciTech or, they, they are brilliant. Them kids, don't they win awards all year long? Don't they constantly win stuff? Well, we have to empower them to, to solve it. We don't wanna have somebody from Idaho. Do, or whatever, you, some, you know. But these kids, we gotta encourage them to look within our structure cause they'll be taking their, our place. So we have to make that bridge. Thanks, thanks guys, we'll talk later. But we have to build bridges. That's what it's all about. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Butts, um, to your point, um, that's probably why I brought some of that up, but, uh, to your point, Channel Twenty belongs to the people. You are the people, so you can definitely get in contact with Mr. Maisel and, um, try to do some things that you see that we need. Absolutely, I agree with you. Thank you, President Bowers.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, the time is six fifty-nine PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Well, nobody wants to say no.
I know, thank you. We stand adjourned.